All right, let's go.
All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome to our special work session on sustainability and resiliency. As we begin this topic, just a reminder that we're going to try to take a high-level approach and touch a whole bunch of different things with the goal of trying to figure out where some of the guiding principles, vision, goals of the council within these two very broad areas so that we can start incorporating those into future planning and what have you. And so we've broken, we've broken, the briefing to this agenda will recap our mission, vision, and goals for the city. We already had a couple of work sessions on that, but we'll touch those. We'll look at the comprehensive plan, both its current form and the guidance that we have now from that council on the future comprehensive plan. We'll talk about current practices and then look at programs and opportunities and then really the bulk of what we hope to do today is to have discussion about what we would like to see or explore. I think it's very important in any of these things before we start figuring out where we want to be is to figure out where we are. So that's why I've got a bunch of the different department heads in who have different functions within the city, but all touch on these topics of resiliency and sustainability. So that's kind of how we're looking to do it. And then just one admin note, a couple of the department heads do have other meetings at 10:00 this morning, so we'll try to get through that stuff quickly and then so that they can hit their other meetings and then we can keep the discussion going. Mission, vision, and goals included because it's kind of the foundation of what we do. These, we haven't changed them. Again, we had two work sessions on these in the past. I don't know if, I'm not going to read them to you. They have not changed. They were last updated, I think, in 2017 or so. So something, something we can continue to look at. But they do, they do talk about our, the desire to take care of the environment in which we operate. We included in the packet some common terms. Laura pulled most of these from the Minnesota Climate Action Framework. So, I mean, if you look up the word sustainability, Webster's may have something different, but because of what we're talking about to kind of ground us with terminology, we used what was in the Climate Action Framework from the state in their definitions from their document. And then I will turn it to the board to talk about our comprehensive plan.
Yeah, so in our comp plan, we identified original planning goals. So these are at the most high level in the comp plan. There's about eight or nine goals in the comp plan, and I pulled out the six that specifically address preservation, resiliency, sustainability kind of elements to them. From these planning goals, we break it down into urban planning goals, rural planning goals, and then we have objections, and then policies. So this is the highest level in our comp plan, but we can see majority of our goals do touch on kind of sustainability, resiliency elements throughout the city as a theme. So protect and preserve Lake Minnetaka and all lakes and natural resources and water quality and its recreational assets. We also talk about maintaining our local character and protection of wildlife, open space lakes and wetlands. Protect and preserve the natural resources, lakes, creeks, marshes, and then preserve open space specifically is called out as a high-level planning goal. And then just protect the general public health, speaking to environmental alternatives, designing of neighborhoods, infrastructures, implementing policies, and then guiding investment in the city regarding densities with environmental protection plans, environmental protection policies kind of driving those decisions. So we do have a handful of policies at our high level where we're implementing different sustainability elements. So 2050 Met Council is just still, they're still putting their resources together to help support cities as we start on the journey of our comp plan amendment, but they did identify kind of the nine required elements to the chapter. And then I specifically called out different requirements of those chapters that are going to have to incorporate sustainability and resiliency in different ways. There's much more than this, but this is kind of the high level. So we're going to have to have, talk about land use, and through land use, we'll have to discuss density, where it should go, where do we want open space, where's rural going to be, where's urban going to be? That speaks to our land use classifications. We'll have to identify different resources throughout the city, solar resource protections, aggregate resource protections, and different elements like that, and implementing different environmental protections on those protected resources. We'll have to have a chapter on housing, so we'll have to kind of assess our housing stock. We'll have to talk about accessible housing and then do some growth management projections for the future of housing. So kind of finding that balance of open space and where to have housing. Transportation is a big element in our comp plan. This is going to, we'll have to talk about all of the variety of transportation options, but we'll incorporate trail planning, biking, pedestrian access, and then we'll also need to do some acknowledgement of greenhouse gas reductions in this chapter as well. We then have three chapters which are fairly technical, but wastewater, water supply, and surface water. Adam really does a lot of bulk, does a lot of heavy lifting in these chapters with engineering, but a lot of these have to do with protection of our water, water resources, specifically the surface water management plan. Parks chapter, we'll talk about our regional park, our trail systems, our local parks, connectivity to green space corridors, maintaining open space, and then creating that CIP for park planning. A new element into the comp plan will be a climate chapter, and there's going to be two sections on this climate chapter, one for climate mitigation and one for climate adaptation. Met Council is going to be providing a bunch of resources and data to help kind of kick off this chapter for the city, but we will have to have it, and we'll have to talk about how to implement kind of their policies and practices and how we can make that work and fit for our city. And then natural systems is another chapter where we have to identify our natural systems, water and terrestrial bodies, identify protective areas and then create strategies and goals to protect those areas. So sustainability and resiliency is really woven into our comprehensive plan and implementing and protecting our city.
I think this is the part of where we'll, Adam's going to take a break.
So the comprehensive plan talks a lot about surface water management, and then as you might, as you might guess, as a municipality, you have jurisdiction over land. But what we do on the land very much impacts the quality of our surface water and our groundwater. So all municipalities are required to have a surface water management plan, and I would say as far as an environmentally focused document next to the comprehensive plan, it is probably the most in-depth in our various environmental practices, both those that are required and those that we aspire to. And so I, we, we do have to update our surface water management plan. It goes hand in hand with the comp plan, so it's on that same cycle. Currently, the watershed districts throughout the state are updating theirs, so they have to be a little bit ahead of us because when we do ours, ours has to tie into, into the watershed district's various plans. So when the state starts the regional, then we do ours in that kind of planning cycle. So I know that, for instance, Minnehaha Creek Watershed District has currently begun theirs. We've been in some meetings with them about what some of the big things that they see are changing or being highlighted as they, as they look at theirs, so we should start getting ready for this.
Are you seeing tighten up the rules or lose some?
Right now, they're a little bit higher level in creating kind of their goals and objectives. They're reviewing the current goals and objectives and they're kind of, and then seeing if they need to shift or alter any of those, or maybe make a new goal or a new focus on an area. And then from those goals and objectives, they would then create regulations to implement those goals and objectives. So they haven't quite gotten down to that applicability.
I'm just wondering if you got a feel for which way they're going to.
No, I think what, in our most recent discussion, the focus of that particular meeting was collaboration throughout the watershed.
Yeah.
And what some of the things they were looking at is just a different, a different mechanism for allocating their resources. You know, their last go around, they really, really focused on Seven Mile Creek and some of these more localized watershed. And one of the things they were talking with us and the other members of the Long Lake Creek sub watershed was, you know, how, how are they going to focus their resources and efforts more onto, into that area, which is beneficial to us because it flows, a large portion of it includes city water. So that, that was kind of what they were focusing on. We didn't really get into any of their necessary changes to their, to their regulations.
Okay. Well, they were presenting that, they're coming to council chambers, right? In the near future, the watershed with the Long Lake Waters Association, they've got a date coming in the next few weeks to present here.
The Long Lake Waters Association?
Yeah, is hosting a Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. I got the notification from Long Lake Waters Association. It's going to be here.
In our, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll find it, never mind.
Okay.
I just thought I'd mention that if there's people interested. It's October 28th.
So our surface water management plan, you can see, these are the, the high-level goals in the surface water management, to protect, preserve, and use of our natural surface and groundwater storage retention systems, maximize capital expenditures to correct, needed to correct flooding and other water problems, identify a plan for effectively protecting and improving surface water and groundwater quality, and you can read the rest, but it's all focused on our, how we manage our surface water. And I always like that little pictorial, again, there's all kinds of things that we do or human beings do on the land that directly impacts the water. So that's why we do it. We also do it because we're required to do it. And there are, there are several other facets to our, our surface water management planning. We also are, we are a permit holder for what's called an MS4 permit, which comes down to us via the MPCA, which originates at the EPA. So EPA power or pushes down to the states, the state of Minnesota, the MPCA has that authority, and then they are required to issue permits to municipalities and watersheds. So we and Minnehaha Creek Watershed District are both MS4 permit holders. That is also about to go through a renewal process, and that, that is where we are, we are bound by a bunch of different regulations on how we manage erosion control.
Infiltration.
Infiltration, how we manage our own infrastructure with respect to the water, and then, you know, and how we issue our permits as we go through our permitting processes. And I threw this in because the other thing that I wanted to make sure that particularly new members of the council understood, surface water management or any environmental resiliency, sustainability effort is not, there's not one, one agency or one element that has total jurisdiction over that. We are all partners and have bits and pieces to play. We're all, you know, cogs in the machine of achieving these higher level goals. So this is just, I tried to highlight there in color code, just from our surface water management plan, I highlighted, and actually, if you read the plan, there are other partners listed in there. These are the kind of the main players that we, we deal with regularly. The Environmental Protection Agency, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and Federal Emergency Management Agency at the federal level are all involved in water quality, surface water, and groundwater management. And so as we either issue permits or pull permits ourselves or do various projects, we're, we're in one way or another engaging with those agencies depending on where their jurisdictions are. At the state level, I highlighted those in blue, the state border of soil and water resources, commonly known as Bowser. They, they have a mandate to implement Minnesota's water and soil conservation policies. They also, you know, we, they also are a controller of some federal funds and things through grants. So as an example, we currently have a water plant project listed on their list, the priority project list, so someday when we need to try to get some state or federal funding, if we pull the trigger on that, our plant project, we're already on their list because we're already on their list for several years before you're asking for the, asking for the funds. So they're also managed some money. MPCA is, you know, the EPA of our state is a way to think about them, and they, they are responsible for monitoring environmental quality and enforcing environmental regulations. And again, as an example, that MS4 permit that we have, that's where that comes from. They also are the ones who have the stormwater quality handbook that we use as best practices for various stormwater management techniques and things that we will refer to. The DNR, we, has a, has a mandate for both the land and, but in particular waters of the state they are responsible for, so Lake Minnetaka, they're the overarching regulatory authority there, so we work with them. You may have noticed as you've watched council packets come through for land use and things like that, you know, there are mandated processes, so anytime we're doing something in the lake shore, we are, we are consulting with the DNR and going through their processes for any, any changes in our ordinance or activities that are in their area. And then Minister of the Department of Health predominantly, that, that's when we start getting into our groundwater or any water that we're using for human consumption. So they, they regulate our wells and our water systems and the water quality there. They also maintain the, the private well inventory for the state. And Metropolitan Council is, well, it's a regional entity, but I included it as a state because all the members are appointed by the, by the governor, so it, I look at it as kind of a state that involves regional planning. And through the, through the comp plan and other mechanisms, they, they are involved as well. And then down at the local, local level, you have Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, who I think you're all familiar with, and then ourselves, who are doing our piece in that. And then just for your reference, comes out of the manual, and I won't read all this to you, but that little chart, it just is another way of showing how whenever we're doing a particular activity, kind of what the various, what various agencies are involved in the various processes that we, we go through to coordinate or get, get permits for different items.
Can I ask, when you have all these agencies and everybody kind of influence how they want things done, and there's probably testing, let's say somebody comes in under quality, do they come back and give, you know, we're doing what we need to do to mitigate things or where is, where is that process or anywhere?
Yeah, so I guess when you look at the higher level, the federal and state, they're, they're, they're the folks who are really doing research and developing standards and, best practices and things like that, and so we're trying to absorb those and use those. And then particularly at the state level, these agencies then also have a regulatory requirement. So as an example, the Department of Health reviews all our water, drinking water stuff. So, you know, we, when we're pulling various water quality samples from our, our large system, we report those findings to the state. If for some reason we're finding things that are starting to get outside of the norms, then they engage and will require certain, certain actions depending on whatever the guidelines are to get that. And the same with, say then, the MPCA, you know, they're the ones who issue our MS4 permit, so, you know, we, we report to them on our activities. They do, usually happens about once every five to eight years, they'll come and do an audit of the decision, how we're doing on our permit and things like that. So it, it varies depending on the particular subject or issue and the agency involved, but yes, most of them have some kind of checks and balances for what we, particularly as permit holders are doing. DNR, also we, we hold our appropriation permits for our wells from the DNR, so we have annual reporting requirements and what have you.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, so I know DJ mentioned one of her laws, we had high first NIC, and so they've mitigated. So is that something they're also watching with us or are we reporting that to them so that it's all checks and balances?
Correct. They're, they're monitoring, we're monitoring. Part of that is on an operational level, keeping that pumping lower to keep those levels lower. If it, if it, I forget, it's quarterly sampling that we're required to do because it is identified, and just to make sure that those levels are increasing. And, and we are so heavily regulated on the utility side that I don't want to steal too much thunder, but it does. Monthly, weekly, monthly, quarterly testing, we may have the consumer confidence report that we are required to submit to the residents and make available as to what our drinking water standards are, where our levels have been at for the last year. And we do, do get the NASTI grabs and adjust levels, you know, re-sampling, we'll re-sample and if it still comes back negative or at a higher level, and then there's some other, other things that, public notifications and then Department of Health comes up and actually helps us with a broader scale.
And that's one thing where that department works, you know, so like is, in our water system as an example, there's water operators who can, you know, send to school and make sure to be able to maintain or to run the system. But when you start getting into really technical things or assistance, then it is the state agencies who have, you know, the scientists and the, and the other folks that when you, when you have an issue or think you might be having an issue, will come in and provide assistance and ultimately are the, the ones who have the final say on particularly anything that has to do with public health, on, okay, yes, you can do this, adjust this, adjust that, and they're, they're the ones who will sign off on whatever actions we take.
So just, just a practical example, somebody, somebody dredges a wetland that happens to be, you know, within the city or it'll, who's responsible for catching that? They don't get a permit, they don't ask anybody for permission, they just go out and drain their wetland in the back, in the backyard. What, what happens then?
Well, so what, what happens then is that first we need to report that it's happened.
Okay, so some, some neighbor's going to have to.
Something has to initiate it, something's happened or there's, there's an issue. And an example like that, if we have a fill in a wetland or some kind of activity in a wetland, say, gets reported to the city, and then, you know, and I guess that's a good example also here is, then we have an obligation then to notify all the other relevant agencies who have something in that case to do with the wetland. So we're, we're on the phone with Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, say, hey, we just, we just got a report of, of fill, fill in a wetland. And a lot of times, like in that example, we'll, we'll lean on the watershed district because they, they have the expertise in the area and saying, hey, are you going to send somebody out to inspect? Do you want us to come? Do you want me to collaborate on this? How do you want to move forward? And then so depending on what it is and what regulations apply, then, then an action plan comes up. Sometimes in like a case like that, whereas Minnehaha Creek may have the expertise that's needed, sometimes the city, we have the, we have the hammer as far as our regulations, so sometimes something like that, we may, they may do the findings and all that, they send it back to us, you know, we do a sort of code violation process because we ultimately have some teeth where we can ultimately, you know.
Prosecute.
Worst case scenario, get to a, you know, a criminal prosecution. A lot of times it's easier for us as a municipality than for maybe a watershed to do that.
Sure.
As an example.
But Adam, we're not surveying for these, we're finding them through a report or, or we happen upon them during right-of-way work or whatever.
Per, per, or community process. Yeah, sometimes someone building a house and then they see they've altered the land too much, they've gotten into an area they shouldn't have gotten to on the land, something like that. So we notice it during development, during construction, during permitting projects, during construction right-of-way projects.
Routine inspections of.
And then also when neighbors call or notify us, hey, someone looks like they're altering the wetlands, they're filling, they're draining, they're doing, they're pumping.
And are those complaints able to be anonymous to the city or not?
So complaints filed through the portal are anonymous, they are not, internally, we can, we have access to it, but it's not public data, it's private data. To the point where if litigation were to happen, technically at that level, I think something might be able to be more public, depend with data practices through litigation. But when it stays within the city and we're just doing code enforcement, it is private.
Okay, enter through the portal. Because that's something that comes up, I won't say frequently, but it's come up in the past years, is I, I see something, I don't want to put my knee to this to say that somebody's filling in the wetland or whatever it is.
Yeah, we require people to, I mean, policy of code enforcement is people do need to say who they are and who is applying, but it is private data, it's not public, it doesn't made public during the code enforcement process.
Yeah, and a lot of it's because we need, we need that contact information to follow up.
Sure.
Often we get a, a very obscure, like this bad thing is happening.
Right.
Where?
It's in this corner, but where are you looking from?
And then I guess another example on that is what's called illicit discharge. So that's another maybe example of when, when, so an illicit discharge is when something is, something, some foreign substance is getting into the, into the watershed stream. So, you know, it might be a leak from a septic or a leak from a sewer, or somebody's deliberately pouring chemicals down a drain. Anytime one of those kind of things happen, there's actually a note, we have an illicit discharge policy in the city, it's one of our requirements, not our MS4 permit. And as an example, something like that has immediate, we immediately have to notify the watershed district, we have to notify the MPCA, and in certain circumstances have to notify the state duty officer at the state level. So a lot of these different events have triggers that require notification and coordination between the various agencies that are at play in those things. So now, now we're just going to go through each of the departments, just really quickly talk to you about some just kind of routine, normal practices of things where they're, they're engaged in resiliency and sustainability type of things. Again, at a high level, if at some point we want to do deeper dives in any of these things, we certainly can do follow-up discussions on those.
Yeah, so with community development, we mostly deal land use and land use projects. So we have our guiding documents which touch on resiliency and sustainability. We follow and implement the city's mission, vision, goal, but also the comprehensive plan. That's what kind of what our department manages and works to implement. With land use regulations, we have things, we have regulations on zoning, floodplain, shoreline, wetland, and all these different kind of elements. These things, the regulations that come out of these are things like setbacks, identifying in zoning, it'd be setbacks, maybe PV clustering, we also have regulations on alternative energy and all these different kind of areas of how people can use kind of their land and their property. For floodplain, we have protective, different protection measures and preservation measures of the floodplain, and we work with MCWD and FEMA and different departments with floodplain management. Our shoreline overlay ordinance is something we talk about a lot. We coordinate with the DNR on that one, and that really what gives us our lake setbacks, our bluff protections and, and those types of improvements regarding in that shoreline area around length increase. We have a wetland regulations to talk about protecting and preserving wetlands. We work really closely with Minnehaha Creek with, with our wetland regulations. We've talked about this previously, but we have a conservation design regulation ordinance that really comes into play at development and subdivision when those projects come through. But that allows us to kind of get a inventory and categorize different natural resources on specific land and then put protections in place regarding like open space or maybe a tree corridor, different specific elements to a specific site. We have a stormwater overlay which top gives us kind of regulations on hardcover which manage how developed kind of different properties can go that speak into kind of water runoff and how it gets into our waterways. And then in our subdivision, we talk about different policies to protect open space. We then have flexibility to talk about development design, we can talk about creating or requiring easements for different spaces to create some protections or buffering in different scenarios. So we kind of implement and have a lot of different projects that talk about sustainability practices and regulations, all within our land use regulations themselves. Those are kind of like how we implement our goals is through our land use regulations. Additional regulations our department deals with are solid waste regulations, environmental and septic systems. A lot of these are coordinated with the county, but our department does coordinate quite a bit with, in these different. But our department does coordinate, um, quite a bit with, in these different, uh, areas. Um, uh, community development also deals with permitting. We've moved to digital permitting, which, uh, specifically eliminates kind of paper plan, it creates uniform access for public records, talking about resiliency access. Um, through our permitting, we also implement erosion control requirements and we coordinate with Minnehaha Creek on almost every permit, uh, for erosion control measures. We also deal with the state with, um, a requirement for, uh, energy code compliance, uh, with building permits and construction there. So we're with our building officials, so we, we work with the state in implementing kind of energy codes too. Um, coordinate with other agencies, I've kind of peppered them in here, but we, we talk to a lot of people, uh, a lot. So we have good relationships with a lot of these, uh, partners and, um, we have access to them and they're very helpful. And then, uh, just to kind of highlight some different department trainings and things that, that we do is, um, we're a member of the Sustainable Land Use Coalition, which is a, kind of a local coalition. That has, uh, monthly meetings to talk about different initiatives going on around the city or sometimes even the state. It also talks about legislative trade, uh, changes and talks about, um, even council regulations coming through to help kind of get input at the development side, uh, side of things. Uh, we participate in the monthly trainings from DNR and Henham County on the, on a variety of topics, but a lot of floodplain, a lot of, um, maybe access to grants or different programs they're putting out. Uh, we're a member of the American Planning Association, uh, we're working with the septic certification process and then Department of Labor Industry with our building official too, with that kind of energy code compliance. So kind of hands into a lot of different trainings as well, kind of throughout the year and throughout the months.
And I'm gonna skip ahead a few slides Cory, so you can read that review, so be next if that's okay.
So just going on that, broke down to six points, a lot of this is collaboration at multiple levels with, with Hen County and Emergency Management Committee. So we deal with not only Hen County Emergency Management, but Homeland Security Emergency Management through the state as well as FEMA. And we saw those partnerships come into and impact our community when we had the floods in two thousand seventeen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, where we had significant damage, where we, uh, used those, uh, partnerships to secure funding and reimbursement for projects up on Baldur Park. We had a project, uh, of.
Casco.
And Casco, where we have a significant buddy and having those partnerships ahead of time, uh, significantly improve that. We continue to do and identify mitigation goals and strategies and as the emergency management for, um, our city. I'm also sit, uh, as the emergency management coordinator for City of Spring Park and Manhattan Beach, so we work with Hen County on those initiatives. I also sit on a board with Hen County, uh, in regards to the USC, which is the urban initiative, uh, urban, urban area strategic initiative, which is a federal. Where we talk about at a federal level, resiliency and security at federal level, and we get some of the money comes back to Hen County, exit on a board to see where those funds go to. They can include election security, um, potential, uh, money that goes towards after funding, um, and so on and so forth. Well, uh, we also deal with, you know, education outreach, we provide country safety in our communities for our, for our youth and adults that are, are going to that. So we do that, let's see, we're actually looking at developing a second program that we, we instruct and speak, not instruct, but speak at groups and programs. And now part of the initiative, we secure the grant for our public safety vehicle, choose our unmarked vehicle, part of that is a huge education program. So we go to schools, uh, to do that, crime prevention discussions, we have Plessby Center, we have the senior centers, multiple opportunities, wherever we see an opportunity to, um, engage in our community, we try to take advantage of that. Part of, uh, you know, resiliency in our community is drug take back program. We implement that, and the strategy behind that was we have a lot of individuals keeping, uh, prescription drugs in their cabinets not getting rid because they didn't know what to do. And sometimes they were more out than not flushing down the toilets, which can, um, to kind of make our water sources and not do good things. So then we issued that drug take back program and over the course of that program that we usually align with at the, our city cleanup days. We've taken hundreds of pounds that we, uh, work with our committee and even continue that where we provide smaller, uh, drug disposal bags for smaller, um, amounts of quantities. It's part to try to, one, reduce, uh, individuals having access to that, also to, you know, have proper disposal so it's not contaminating our resources. Uh, another hot topic, that's probably gonna be, uh, council members will probably be getting a few phone calls, um, as the fall, now the weather has turned, we'll be seeing with deer management. So that's, you know, part of the, you know, we look at deer management, pest control, uh, there's not a review and it's difficult because we are more of a rural area. We have the landscaping that provides habitat for that and, you know, that's where we try to find a balance, what is, uh, a pest, what is a nuisance? And then how do we control that? Some of the deer management programs we have from local, due to the fact that we are a more rural and natural area. And we get complaints, you know, car deer accidents, County Road Six and North Shore, Larchtown Road are our highest. And due to the fact that we have large acreage, we have pristine and prime areas for them to thrive. But we do have, you know, bulk, with hunting, uh, permits that we encourage individuals to access that. We utilize in the last two winters and up and to do aerial surveys with three rivers in our area that they'll come and do aerial surveys. We had not a lot of snow covers the last couple of years, so we didn't get a true perspective, but with that information, we may then look at other opportunities, what can we do to manage that? We also get phone calls related to beavers damaging trees and areas. We usually issue a few permits for those a year for trapping, um, has been successful. And then we have these like the coyotes, uh, seen coyotes, what can we do? People wanna shoot them, what can we do? We won't trap them and once again, try to work with our DNR partners. There's not a lot of availability for control or elimination due to the fact of our area and once you, because we are a prime location for those. If we take somehow they just attract more than other, other, and where do we find them? So we try to do our best, uh, I tried to get the numbers, I did not, I apologize, they did, did not get the numbers. We usually average about, um, thirteen of forty, uh, bull hunting applications per year. And in, um, the past, we looked at where we had complaints and where the hunters were and they almost coincided to the same areas with the problem. And since individuals on behind us come out here to try to shoot a blood buck versus taking it over. And that, that's some of the concerns and issues that we looked at implementing programs such as having a, uh, higher fee for the application to apply for a permit. And then once you show proof of the application that you shot it over, we refund the majority of it. And so they encourage that, so we're looking at programs for that. Uh, electric vehicles, that was one of those we, we, we spoke about the last couple of years, the problems in our environment and the way that we're, uses, we're still closely monitoring other departments that are utilizing this. We're not having great success in a police, uh, electric vehicle due to the fact that, uh, the weaker weathers, there, people are seeing success in them in the summertime. But in the wintertime, you lose a lot of the availability for charging, but then we also have to look at sustainability within our infrastructure on, uh, where do we store these? How do we, uh, charge these, make sure that they're being charged for our shift? But we're still evaluating, um, that to see the pros and cons and, and moving forward, uh, with that sustainability to, uh, electric vehicles. And just community development, uh, we're looking, you know, we're, we're always trying, the job market is tight for, uh, police officers. So we're always trying to look for opportunities for recruitment. We, uh, we utilize going to job directors, college chairs, even working at a high school. And that's where we've seen that most of the individuals that are in colleges already have those, uh, department they're going to, so we actually went to high schools. And with that being said, uh, we had a process with, with that, that program, we've had just one cycle up through it. And now he was in field training to become an officer, and if your next council meeting, we have a recommendation to hire three more cadets that are currently in school. And looking to be a part of our department and we bring them through so that we have sustainability when we know and protect, uh, retirements. And our, uh, department that we have access to candidates and good candidates that are re- ready to step up into those positions, so.
Does anybody have any questions for Cory and his stuff, because he does, he's one of the ones asking.
Real quick, raccoons, where do they fall at?
Don't, uh, what we can do is we save the city, there's a couple of very good companies, we don't like to, you know, focus on one and give, just say we have an athlete uses. There's several companies that do, do well, most of the time, if you call and ask us what to do, there is trapping. We do not allow because, you know, people always kind of shoot it. Well, the problem is with geographical boundaries, uh, where, you know, you take a rifle, you take a twenty, whatever you want to use, even a bow, we have restrictions, we can't discharge it unless the city have a permit. And then again, you have to show that it's a pest, we have reference, a lot of times if they have distemper, we, we, we're not allowed right now, we're going out and we will eliminate.
Okay, you will, okay, so distemper ones you'll see in the middle of the day.
If it's one that got skunk, uh, raccoon just wandering around that's not, does not have distemper, does not look like it's, uh, ill, we, we don't, we, it's, it's a pest, it's a, it's part of nature. You know, we occasionally get possums, coyotes, we, you know, it's part of nature, part of being out and living in an area.
Oh, I get that, it's more the distemper, uh, ones, right?
Contact, contact us, we'll come up, just this morning we went and, um, took one out.
Okay.
Due to the distemper, I mean, some of those, especially this time of year, you'll find out and we'll take, yeah, we'll, we'll assist with that.
Thank you.
And our drug take back, we only do that, uh, at certain times of the year, right?
So, uh, city cleanup in the spring.
Okay.
There again, there's opportunities, uh, Spring Park Fire Patrol and Spring Park has a prop box, that's open twenty-four hours, seven days a week as well as the UGRC. So if you have a large quantity, refer them to them. We say if it's within a couple of weeks of cleanup, we say hold onto them, otherwise if it's small quantities, we have the bags that can take up to ninety pills.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thanks Cory.
Thanks Cory.
All right, DJ, you're up next, how it works.
Good morning, so wanna touch on a few things, a lot of what we do, maybe that's on a lot of the other departments. So highlight a few of them, uh, brush sites, um, repurposing, uh, we've expanded that program in, in recent years with, uh, the logs and, and larger sized brush. That allows us to, um, give back to the community, um, with repurposing and it also improves our right of way areas. Uh, we have been here ten years, coming out ten years, and we had a lot of illegal dumping happening in the roadside ditches and, and leaf bags and, and grass clippings and all that. Uh, with the grass clippings, it's contaminant into, um, our stormwater and, and our waterways. So been very receptive from the residents, they always want more, uh, they're always calling, can we get more mulch? Can we get more, um, soil, um, and, and all that? So it's a good resource, uh, that we, we, uh, that we offer, so. Uh, cleanup days, uh, you heard Cory, uh, talk about that a little bit, uh, we partner with a lot of different agencies, that's another program that we've expanded over the years since, uh, since we've been here, both Adam and I. Trying to reduce and reuse, um, eliminate our, um, once again, like our brush site, uh, legal dumping, uh, appliances. We run into it quite often, Joe, uh, gets it down at Casco Ice Rink, um, people dumping stuff and all that, so we offer twice a year, originally it was once a year. But, uh, we see that reduction, um, crews aren't having to go out and pick stuff up, um, and it's repurposed. Uh, a lot of those appliances, a lot of that scrap metal, uh, the bikes, um, I don't have the quantity on the bikes, um, get refurbished. And they, uh, bring them overseas, uh, for, uh, underprivileged children and, uh, underprivileged, uh, communities. So repurposing, uh, once again, we're coming into fall, winter operations. Uh, the salt reduction, uh, salt sand, uh, we, we used to run salt sand, uh, the watershed district. Wants us to shy away from that, wants us less is more, um, very controversial with salt quantity affecting our lake quality. We sent all of our new employees, um, to a salt symposium, um, all our equipment gets calibrated so that we're, um, I'll get the speech here in a couple of weeks from, from Adam. You know, calibration, uh, trying to do less, um, change some of our, uh, management practices and, and all that. Trying to clear off that snow before we put that product down, trying to save the environment as much as we can. And, you know, um, coinciding with public safety, uh, for the roadways inside of us, so. Uh, right of way sweeping, uh, that is an ongoing, uh, throughout the whole year. We do not as much in the wintertime, we're capable of doing it, um, we don't have as much, our quantities are, are less now in the, in the past few years. Because we're reducing that sand quantity, um, working with, um, our local agencies, trying to coincide. So if, uh, Hen County is sweeping, uh, we're sweeping ahead of them, getting it off our sidewalks and hand trails and all that into the county roads, working those partnerships. Keeps it out of our waterways and, and our leaks and streams, so. Uh, city utilities.
One thing on the sweeping, I just always like to highlight, um, we sweep on our streets, but street sweeping is really a water quality, uh, issue. So we, it is one of our prime things that we list in our surface water management plan of what we can do operationally on the land, uh, to improve water quality in particular. Uh, we track, uh, based on the debris that we, uh, pick up, we send samples, uh, so we can determine every year how much phosphorus, uh, that we are removing from the streets. That would otherwise end up in, uh, in the stormwater system, uh, which phosphorus is one of the, one of the pollutants that's, that's heavily tracked. And one of the things that, uh, particularly in our areas, you can come from the rural to the urban, there's large amounts of phosphorus from agriculture. But, um, just naturally occurring, where can we pick that up? So, um, when you hear street sweeping, yep, we're on the streets, but it's really water quality, uh, is what we're achieving with that effort, so, sorry DJ.
Yep, no, that's good.
My, my plug.
Not, not just the streets out there, also, um, we'll allude to it with our stormwater, uh, side of it, um, our storms are catch basins. Um, we're not, we're trying to pick that debris up before it enters that, um, as much as possible. We go out typically after every storm, um, trees, we have the, uh, hailstorm here a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we went out and sent the streets with ground after that, picking up the debris, trying to get that off the roadway as much as possible. Because that does trap not only in, you know, our local area, but into neighboring cities, so, um, that goes back to that collaboration again. The city utilities, water and sewer, um, it's been highlighted recently in the council meeting, our well impertaining plan. We're mandated to update that, we're in that cycle right now, that, uh, puts buffer zones around our drinking water. So we provide clean, safe drinking water, as you alluded to it with our arsenic, um, we're always trying to stay ahead of it. You know, because it, uh, referred to it as drink, drive and flush, clean drinking water, you know, sewer goes away and you got relatively safe roads to drive on. That's our primary, you know, our primary responsibilities. We do annual, um, leak survey of our water system. Uh, we recently identified, just got, um, two, two leaks that haven't surfaced. Uh, so now we're going and investigating those, um, and that cuts down on our DNR permit requirements and all that, that we can, what we can pump and, and water conservation. Our sanitary sewer lift stations, we're, we're in those weekly, um, checking and making sure we don't have any leaks, any, uh, contaminants getting outside of that infrastructure, the piping and all that. Uh, leading to glutens and, and that sort of thing, so. And then our, uh, stormwater, Adam alluded to it earlier, but, um, heavily, uh, regulated around the Lake Montaquia area because of the watershed district. And all of our other regulatory, um, we're working with, uh, um, on the water side, but, um, our local city, uh. Manhattan Beach and Spring Park, we have watering interconnect systems, so if something happens, we have that responsibility to, uh, get water from another city, uh, if needed. It's a very unique system around the lake area, so. In collaboration with our, our local cities as to typically the trend, if they're doing something, then it migrates. And we adapt it to what we need to for, we've got the urban and we've got the rural, uh, very unique and on, so. Questions?
It's leaf season, so I remember a couple of, I think it was two falls ago, uh, the brush site was open on Sundays to drop off leaves. It wasn't last fall.
Wasn't last fall.
Is it gonna be open again this year on Sundays?
We're looking at depending upon how, how much comes down and how fast.
Yeah, it's likely to be pretty fast this year.
Yeah, it's, as you can see, the, the changing of the colors have, have, uh, happened real fast. So we, we monitor that and, and see how it, how much is coming in and how much is still left up on trees. Partly it's weather dependent, um, we get an early snow and we shut it down, all of that. Our, uh, site attendants out there are asking and. Our, uh, site attendants out there are asking and pay more hours and, and all that, we look at that cost benefit ratio.
Yeah.
And you said people are getting, um, soiled, so we do have a, um, a connection to a, um, composting? I know we send our stuff to composting, but is, is that done by another company?
That's done by another company, um, they will, when they, um, chip our brush and leaves, they will also bring in a tub grinder, um, and mix with soils that we currently have and, um, degrading soils that are out at the brush site and also, um, at their site out in Watertown. So it's a highly, uh, uh, effort. They'll come and grab throughout the year our leaf and grass and bring it out through their facility, mix it in with what they currently have based on years of, um, degradation and then they'll bring it back to us on, on, on a back haul.
Okay.
And we've got a bumper out there, it's self-service, uh, we've had some residents bumpering in, a loader, uh, or have us, you know, man the site to, or, and load them, uh, we've done that in the past and we've actually damaged equipment, uh, trailers and, and vehicles. And so, so bringing shovels and.
Shovel in a bucket.
Shovel, exactly, exactly, and it's intended for smaller, uh, flower gardens and smaller operations. It's not intended for the landscaping outfits where you're redoing your whole yard and, and all that, so.
I have one other question regarding the leaf litter this time of year, there's a lot of sustainability, um, in terms of that subject, in terms of grinding up those leaves, using them for mulch, using them for fertilizer in the lawns, are we doing any set of communications on leaf litter? And how do we purpose that? Do we do that typically with that?
Uh, we have in the past, um, there's a, um, in conjunction with our MS four permit, there's an education, uh, requirement. And so, uh, yes, we either through the newsletter or through, uh, something in your website, and one of the things that cycles through there is, you know, fall activities, there's, we also have, you know, some, and most of that stuff, we actually go to the, you know, our partners like the MPCA and others who produce these nice flyers and then we kind of repurpose them and send them out, but, uh, yes, I, I don't know off the top of my head if we have that in this year's cycle, but we have, I know we have in the past included that.
And provide the links out on the city website and, and working with Rachel's and the tenants this, uh, this morning. Working with her to put more publications out there and more, uh, more educational materials.
All right, that, uh, we'll seg, I'm sorry, segue into engineering, um, and so, um, which, which I'll cover. One of the things, uh, that, uh, as we go from public works to engineering, one of the things about resiliency and sustainability is also, um, our focus and, 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 uh, intent to continually increase our focus on preventive maintenance. So the better we take care of our things, uh, our pavement, our utility systems and what have you, um, the, the more sustainable and resilient we are, so if we're not, uh, if we're not, uh, having to recycle, try to recycle pavement, uh, more frequently, better, better overall, better for the taxpayers' pocketbook, uh, but also better for the environment overall, so. You'll hear me a lot as we do CIP talks and things like that about trying to do preventive maintenance, trying to get ahead of, uh, things that we're not at the point where systems are failing and we have to do complete replacements of things because that's expensive and, um, not, not as environmentally sound, so. So anyway, uh, within the engineering, uh, department, uh, as you know, I'm the office of one, uh, but we do have a consulting firm that backstops me with all the specialty, uh, functions. So the things that, uh, the, the department focuses on, one is support to, uh, particularly to the planning zoning department, uh, and development and permit grading reviews, um, so I do, I do do those or I, um, I use, uh, Bolden Inc. to do, uh, those reviews depending on their complexity, um, to ensure compliance, one with the city code, uh, but also with, uh, make sure we're complying with our MS four permit. And then, uh, we also, uh, do, um, development erosion control inspections, so. The building department does, uh, those inspections for building permits, uh, for the larger developments, uh, either myself or, uh, one of the certified folks from Bolden Inc., uh, will, will do those, um, those larger, um, erosion control inspections. We talked about, uh, I manage the surface water management plan when that needs to be, uh, relocated and also coordinate the activities in it. Uh, we already covered that in some separate slides. Combined with that, I've mentioned a couple of times is our MS four permit, which stands for municipal separate storm sewer system. It's a mouthful, uh, but, uh, and we briefly talked about this, so that, uh, that permit requires a public education outreach, just talked about it, uh, public participation involvement, which we do through our website, uh, illicit discharge detection and elimination, talked about that a little bit, uh, construction site, uh, storm water runoff control, and that's, goes back to doing those reviews and those inspections. And then post-construction storm water management, also those, particularly those development reviews, when they're all required to have a, a, uh, a storm water management plan, um, so we review those to, uh, as well as the watershed, uh, to review, we review those to ensure they're in compliance with the current, uh, state rules on, um, what they need to do in the long term once the project is done. Uh, and then, um, finally, uh, in, in-house, we're responsible for ensuring we're doing good housekeeping of our own, uh, stuff, our own infrastructure, as an example, we, um, DJ's crew has to do a, uh, a monthly inspection of our salt storage, uh, facilities and things like that to ensure that we're, uh, not leaking, uh, salt out into the environment, things like that. As we'll talk a, a lot about in the upcoming work sessions, uh, I do a lot of the capital improvement planning for the city infrastructure, where we're trying to integrate water quality and storm water management into our transportation projects, for instance. We do integration of, uh, storm water and water quality with our parks and our facilities projects, we talked a lot about that with, you know, Hafberry, uh, efforts and what we wanna do with some storm water, uh, work there. We do the, uh, the storm water, uh, improvement specific projects, some of which come from our surface water management plan, part of that was, uh, as we do those plans identifies ten years worth of, hey, these are the different areas that we wanna focus on improvements, so. For instance, uh, later this afternoon, I'm going to do, uh, a, a, a pre-construction, uh, conference, uh, for some improvements out of the Kenobi Pond, uh, site, uh, and then we also are, uh, working plans right now for, uh, the Casco, um, wetland and storm water, uh, facilities, uh, down there, which we'll probably look at doing some construction, uh, in the, uh, in the winter and then in the spring. And then, um, the, uh, inflow and infiltration reduction for our sanitary sewer, that's a big part of our, uh, resiliency and environmental efforts, um, and what inflow and infiltration is, is surface or groundwater getting into the sanitary sewer system. That causes problems for, for a number of reasons, one, which can overwhelm the system, uh, and then we end up with an illicit discharge where we have sewer water coming out of a manhole or some other structure and going places we don't want it to go. And it also, uh, is a, is a resiliency, uh, issue, um, it's all that storm, or all that, sorry, sanitary, uh, fluent goes into the metropolitan council system and ours eventually goes to Shakopee where they have to treat it, uh, before it's released. And so, the more, the more water they have to deal with, the bigger the plants have to be, the bigger all the infrastructure has to be, uh, to try to deal with that. So we do, we are quite aggressive in, uh, doing what we can, uh, in that regard, and we are particularly susceptible to inflow and infiltration, uh, just based on the topography of our city and where our sanitary sewer systems are. We have a lot of them on the lakeside of, of homes that we're trying to, you know, the sanitary sewer system is there to help protect, uh, the lake, but by its very nature, where it is, uh, and its location, it makes us susceptible to inflow and infiltration, so. And then, uh, yeah, again, all that preventive maintenance I alluded to before is trying to do projects early so that we can get our infrastructure to last, uh, for as long as possible.
Adam, would you say, eh, in that area there would help, uh, control, and I'd hate to pick on it, but the mound issue type thing? That, you know, with their water quality and all that's going on with that?
Um, well, so mound has some, uh, issues with their groundwater.
Okay.
Uh, that they're pulling into their wells and, uh, some contaminants, uh, that are, that are in there. I mean, I guess, yes, overall, uh, the less sewage we have going that eventually can get into our water, drinking water sources, uh, the better. The, uh, but the issues like with mound and Spring Park also has, uh, some issues where they have to do specific filtration. Those are, a lot of those are, uh, the results of old industrial processes and uses, um, that, you know.
So, but, but lack of capital improvement done.
Eh, eh, exactly.
Right, so this is kind of doing that, doing that, uh, to help, you know?
In a lot of their cases, I would say, you know, it's a, it's a more systemic issue from just our society and the way that we regulate, you know, the way that our forbearers regulated and managed some of these processes that now, it takes, takes twenty-five plus years for some of these pollutants to work their way through the soils to get to where they're now impacting the well. And so now some of our, yeah, our sister cities are dealing with, with those issues and, and, you know, and, and when you start doing that, you know, mound is struggling because I, I can't remember off the top of my head, but something on the order of twenty-five million dollars, uh, to redo their water plant, um, to, to be able to address, uh, you know, and get the pollutants that, that are, that are seeing out. So, it, it is very expensive on that end too, when we're trying to deal with, call it old environmental problems, um, but.
Is the state pretty receptive to helping municipalities like, say, mound? Do they try to help up kick in so that, I mean, not still have good drinking water?
Yes and no, I think, so.
So, probably metro, no.
So the, the challenge that the state, the federal government, local, who we all have, is that, uh, drinking water infrastructure is insanely expensive, um, and so, uh, you know, like, uh, mound, they did get a, uh, a grant, uh, uh, from the state legislature through that process, but, and, and I'm making these numbers up, but it was something on the order of like ten thousand dollars.
Oh, jeez.
Or, or, you know, it, it was.
Minimal.
It was minimal and now, okay, well now they got this gap, how do they, how do they bridge that gap? So, yes, you can get, uh, there are, uh, there are programs that, uh, we can apply to for the state and the federal government, um, but, you know, like anything else, there's a limited amount of, there's a limited pot of money and they're trying to figure out how to, how to, how to dole it out, so.
Yeah, it's just such an important issue, I mean, it can, it can, a healthy, our health issue and, I mean, it just goes into so many different levels that you kind of wanna help your other municipalities, cause we're, we all live, you know, and I understand like with Spring Park, we have the little Tonto toys and, you know, but, uh, yeah, it is kind of frightening and it kind of goes into that, uh, whiskeys for drinking and waters for fighting over, so.
Well, and I think.
Waters for fighting over, that's an old Mark Twain quote.
I think we'll always face the issue too of, uh, the image that we're the wealthy suburbs, so we don't deserve the, the end up from the state as much as some poorer communities.
Yeah, that is true, you know, there's a lot, uh, and that, that goes with a lot of the grants and things like that, or we'll go try to, to get some state money. And, you know, it's, we, we, our, our community is blessed that it is, is relatively wealthy, uh, compared to others, but when we're asking for our piece of state money, you know, there, there is also, there is usually in all those things, uh, an equity, uh, an equity component and disparity component in how they, they look at those things. And at the state level with the, with the drinking water, um, you know, the state's looking statewide, a lot of our, our rural rather than outstate, uh, our, you know, uh, community of two hundred, uh, may have as much cost to provide safe drinking water as, you know, communities of ten thousand and twenty thousands like we have here in the metro. Um, and so, a lot of times they're, you know, our, uh, your fellow elected officials at the state legislature, uh, level are trying to figure how, how do we do that kind of stuff, so. And then just finally, uh, I think standards and development, uh, so everything we do in engineering, there's a standard or a specification, uh, that we're relying on, um, and most of those do take into some, uh, s, uh, account of resiliency and sustainability. So as a city, we have our standard plates, which are our standard, uh, standard designs for things like how do we build a catch basin? How do we, how do we do a driveway entrance? How do we, you know, build a road, all those kind of things, we, we have standards which are derived from some state or federal level, we standard. In particular, at the streets level, we, uh, we refer to the MinDOT Standard Specifications Book, uh, it's a book they republish every three years, uh, YFIC. So whenever we do a road project or something like that, we're referring, uh, to those specifications and yes, they, as they redo those, they're looking, are we in compliance with, uh, the local guidelines and things, not only environment, but, um, all the various different aspects. For utilities, uh, we use what's called the CEAM, uh, specification, stands for City Engineers of Minnesota, um, eh, specification, so it's a specification book on when, when a pipe goes in the ground, is this type, or, you know, there's these types and how, how that's done, how it's inspected, uh, those sorts of things. Those are then further based on what's called the five state standards, so the five midwestern states kind of have a similar standard for utilities, so we use those. Storm water, I mentioned, we use the MPCA Storm Water Manual, uh, they update that every few years, that have a lot of the best, uh, best practices that they're evaluating, so we can incorporate those. Uh, and then beyond that, I'm a member of the American Public Works Association for Minnesota, the City Engineer Association of Minnesota. We're also, uh, I go every three years to recertify for my storm water, uh, uh, design certification, which allows me to do inspections. Our folks at, you know, Bolden Inc. also have a number of folks that do the same, uh, and, uh, we are members of the Minnesota Rural Water Association and, uh, the Minnesota City Storm Water Coalition, so all these different groups that we belong to that either through, uh, literature or readings and things like that, uh, that we try to, try to stay up on whatever the latest, uh, latest trends and best practices are out there in those various fields and so on. That's, any questions on the engineering stuff? Again, we'll touch on a lot of that capital stuff here in the next couple of work sessions as we look forward to the next couple of years of projects. So, Joe?
So, um, the first, uh, section here is just, um, it's very important to have a assessment inventory of resources, especially in parks, so, um, we just have a, you know, we have an inventory of, um, parks, our facility assets, trails, fields, natural areas, at, like, access points. That way we can look at which are the most high priority and to focus, you know, resources where needed onto those, which can, you know, serve the public and conservation values the best. To, you know, piggyback on DJ, we, uh, our staff, um, does, um, plow trails and parking lots, um, for the city also. They also go through the salt training, um, and just trying to use best practices to not oversalt things and make sure it's safe, but not getting into our groundwater, so they go through this similar process, um.
Compared to ten years ago, how much salt, how much less salt are we using, like mixing with water and pre, pre-spraying and all of that sorts? Do you have any statistics on that?
Um, we, we track that in our, uh, annual report, I don't have it off the top of my head, but the biggest change for us is we used to do, DJ alluded to it and a lot of cities did it, it was a salt mix, which we were putting a huge quantity of material, um, on the ground and then all that salt embedded with sand was then clogging up, getting into our, our storm water system, so. About ten years ago or so, we started, we started going to these trainings and, and, and learning more and more, and then so we went away from using salt, sand mix, except in some particular really low temperature situations. And going to pure, pure salt and also doing things like pretreating, uh, with the brine and things like that. Cause it's all about trying to break the connection between the ice and the pavement and so that you can then use mechanical means to then clear the material, so, um, so we've made a huge reduction in the amount of stuff that we're putting on our roads during the winter, um, but I don't know off the top of my head, we'd have to go look at the numbers on, uh, exactly the pounds of salt.
Do you track it also with the weather conditions? Cause there are years where we've had very little snowfall or ice buildup.
We, we do.
And that's another factor, in other words.
Yes, uh, and in fact, uh, we have a, a snow and ice, uh, manual, policy manual that we have for this, uh, the city, which then, uh, refers to some, uh, some standards, uh, that we get from the state about, um, and there's this whole big table, uh, in there about, okay, this kind of weather condition, uh, the recommended, uh, number of pounds per lane mile of salt is X, and then this other condition, it's this other thing, and it, you know, as an example, it gets too cold, don't use any salt because it's not gonna work. Go to other means, so, um, yeah, it varies, and then year to year, obviously it varies because, uh, you know, we kind of count on about fifteen two inch plus snow events a year, and some years we have a few more, some years we have a few less, the last couple, last year was very light. Last couple, last year was very light. Um a few years ago, it seemed like every other day in February, we were plowing a couple inches of snow off the road. Um so it varies and yeah, and that plays into also our uh our our budget and trying to figure out, uh because we have to place our orders for salt a year in advance.
Right.
And so, uh yeah, we're always kind of uh branching through our streets, we're always trying to play that guessing game of, well, you know, how much, uh and you know, once we order, we have to take it, um and so we're kind of balancing that game.
So you take a year that we didn't, we ordered the salt, didn't use as much, is, are we able to reuse that the next year? Or is there a like shop like for it?
No, we did, we use until it's gone.
Okay.
Yeah, the bigger challenge is if you add like the urge, uh that we didn't use a lot of salt.
Yeah.
Um we're still taking a huge amount, uh you know, we have very limited storage capacity. Um and so then we're we're scrambling and we're going with our partners like Hennepin County. Uh for a number of years, we'd say, okay, well, you can bring your salt, store it here at our facility, when your facility down in the bar, um things like that, so. Yeah, it impacts us. And we are also the, uh we we also are the salt provider store for not only ourselves, but Minnetoka Beach Schools.
Can we get an update then to the mayor's point about kind of a look back in terms of where we are with how much we're using, how much we're buying, that'd be helpful.
Yes, no, absolutely, it's a, it's one of the, like, it's one of the metrics we have in the annual, uh the annual staff report we do. Um I just don't know off the top of my head, I can't remember what the numbers were, but we track how many, how many pounds of salt we're putting on our roads, how many major storm events we had, not main, but major storm events we had the the previous year, that sort of thing.
To go along with that, because we didn't approve the new salt shed and we're gonna be using the old one still.
Yep.
Are you able to store some of the?
No.
Yep. No, some of the equipment there in the old um uh public works so that we don't have to drive back and forth as much? Or can you not do that?
Yeah, we attempted to do that last year, but with the with the fire operation, so that's still an operational thing that has to be worked on uh for this winter. The the shed is full um for storage, right? We were actually sitting, uh we have to take two hundred ton off of last year's allotment. We go out fully loaded with um seven trucks and, excuse me, seven tons per truck. We come back with probably about five tons left on that truck, we use it for weight, uh to get up and down the hills. So it, I think Brent orders four hundred ton for this calendar year. Knowing what we had in the shed, what we, what we have allotment for yet from last year, so it's always a coconut shuffle. Equipment wise, um yeah, we tried to keep a loader over there last year, but just operationalized it didn't, didn't work as well. Because we always have to go get it for other operational stuff, we didn't have one dedicated just for loading trucks, so.
Okay.
Joe, just one second, so do we, do we have any oversight over what um private parties use for applying salt on driveways, private roads? Do we have anything that says you?
Not regulatory, not regulatory, what we do is, we do, as part of the education piece, is we share, you know, smart salting, just like the belief, lethal question, we have some things that we share out with the community.
Okay, so we could have private parties, snow removal companies really negatively impacting our.
Yeah, it's a good question.
We see it everywhere.
Yeah.
We'll see it a lot with low traffic areas, they'll, they'll dump that salt on for insurance purposes that slip, trip or fall. And not to pick on Ridgedale as an example, but they uh a hundred thousand dollars on every typical slip. Um now, this was fifteen, twenty years ago, that they would just pay out uh just to write the check. And so you'll see where it gets that chalky buildup and doesn't do any good. Um it has to be cleaned out, it has to be, you know, surprising wintertime, black pavement, um still does hold some heat, not a lot. But we try to get it down to the flat, not further concrete, so.
But I mean, people like, you know, in Navarre, for example, someone plowing a parking lot and it's, you know, Steve's Plow Service, I'm able to dump as much as I want, we don't govern that?
We don't, worship doesn't, there's no, it's best man, going back to best management practices.
Yeah.
Could we, could we manage that? Could we say if you're gonna have a service within the city of one?
We don't license them, do we? I mean, all contractors.
We'd have to, I'd have, we'd have to check and see what regulatory authority we would have.
Yeah, well again, you probably have the insurance issue, right?
Yeah.
You get that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, but that's a good question because we're private at Sugar Woods and we have, I know at the end we have to salt because when the buses come in, we've had buses go into the tree and we've replaced it twice inside the building because it it's just so slippery at the end when you're trying to get out back onto Brown Road that you'll slide down the hill and the, and the buses can't make the turn and, you know, so. Some years they put a lot on and some years they, see, obviously don't when the, when the buses are in the trees, so.
It's a safety issue right there.
Exactly.
Right, exactly.
Right, I mean, that's the whole thing. And we have, we might have more private roads in our area than a lot of other areas.
We have a lot of private roads.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Hey, that's a great question.
It just seems like a little bit of a gap.
Yeah, you know, public education, flyers, handouts, um that, you know, we see, hey, here's a flyer, do you know? Working with the school, you know, and I know we're taking away parts right now, but um I know the school district is reaching out and trying to do more, um the old education and all that, they get salt from us. Just had a conversation with their folks this morning about branding and all that, so.
Just to finish up with that, you know, just um working with staff to make sure um you're using the right equipment when you're plowing trails and park areas, so you're not damaging the parks, it's a important resource. Um mowing and landscape, we try um to keep park areas and trails as natural as possible, you know, which includes less frequent mowing zones. A lot of these are in the process, so a lot of you are, you know, pollinary friendly planting beds, try to use compost, um and then replacing any plants with native that are little gardens that are gonna not take as much water or work there. Um of course, always trying to use native plants, if possible, uh we're replacing or installing new vegetation. Um that's a slow process because you don't want to take a healthy tree or something out just to replace it with a native, but um you know, that's always the plan going forward with adding something new or replacing something. And then just make sure when something's removed that you're monitoring and making sure the native is reestablished, so the, you know, especially with buckthorn and things like that, um that they're not being reestablished and destroying the natives, which is a big problem.
Do we have a policy around that when we're taking out a large block of unsenses service coming in or volunteer groups are taking out buckthorn? If you're not getting in there quite quickly and reestablishing something else, do we have a plan or not? Otherwise it just, in pieces will come in again.
Yeah, we we have, we have, let's say we're developing more of a concrete plan. We have a loose plan where you go in and you would, you know, treat the buckthorn. Especially at the golf course, it's tough because, you know, we don't control any of the wetland on the other side. It's just all buckthorn, so it kind of keeps coming back, but we try our best to to treat it. And then um the tough part is getting the re, you know, the planning something else that's gonna, gonna kind of reel it back, so.
The challenge with buckthorn is, um you know, it, it's viable for about seven years and after you take it and then plus any seeds that have fallen, so um you can go in and clear cut it and and remove it, um but then we, you know, like a sense to serve maybe comes in and clear cuts an area for us and we have to follow up with a chemical treatment to kill the stumps, uh if they're left in the ground. And then you have to keep coming back because again, I know it's my own property, you know, keep going back and keep coming back.
It's stubborn.
It is, it's very stubborn.
Pretty turbulent.
Yeah, so it's, it's, you know, a continuing problem and we are, you know, have an opportunity to develop something a little more concrete with some help with some partners to get a better, you know, plan for that. I think we're going in a right direction, but not totally there yet. Facility operations, just touching on this a little bit, you know, um just monitor efficiency, efficiency upgrades, you know, adding LEDs where possible, making sure HVAC, you know, this is that preventative maintenance, to make sure they're running properly so we're not using excess um energy to heat the buildings or cool them. We have this ongoing solar for the public works building. Um a good thing with that building, since it was, you know, a newer building, it's equipped with LED lights. The lights are on motion sensors so that there's no movement around, the lights go off, so that saves, saves energy. Um I know it qualified for a lot of energy rebates based on its sustainable construction. On staff side, you know, our custodian staff are trained in cleaning chemical use, so limiting um what chemicals we use in the buildings and um in our facilities and using natural products. Cooperation with that. Our park operations, um so part of this is, we'll, we'll talk a little more about a tree plan we have going on, um which we're in the middle of developing, but just trying to use our best practice for tree planting um and making sure we have a healthy canopy. As you can see with ash trees, the planting needs to be buried so we're not stuck with something in thirty years where another tree disease has come and we're dealing with that. And you know, that includes just, like I touched on, selection, uh making sure we have trees that are inventoried so we know on the health, so we can monitor them. Routine maintenance, um which is, you know, trimming and making sure they're, they're healthy. Another thing we do, we try to reduce um our fertilizer pesticide use as much as possible. I would say right now it's pretty much um regulated to golf and some of our sports fields, like the soccer field, just because of their um their use. You know, we're, we're also looking at making sure that when we're irrigating turf, that we're using that properly so we're not watering things that don't need to be watered, um which helps those water, obviously.
Joe, I have one other question. As you all have been talking about pesticide use, in a park like Seven Nations, which is essentially three acres of natural, I know it's full of thistle. Is that something that is being chemically treated or that's going to be mitigated through a receiving project? Or what is the, what is our?
We have options for both, um so we can do um like limited pesticide, pesticide treatment on certain areas and um you know, our staff is trained to do that. We could also contract that out to some companies that are, you know, focused on native, like wildfire or or similar areas. What we did this season is cut it back to try to see if we can get some more natives to to come back and then do some spot treatment when needed, um which is, yeah, it's, it was kind of a mess back, it's a mess back a little bit. It's, it's all working on. Yeah, our, our staff is trained in, you know, application of fertilizer and pesticides, um and so they, you know, not just, uh just the application of it, but also the mixing of it, so you're not using too strong of a chemical when it's not good and that helps. And they assist with our streets team, um spraying, spraying weeds that are on the right away. And since they're a little more trained in that, they usually mix that up with the streets teams to make sure that they're using the right chemicals. Park operation wise, like uh in equipment, you know, we wanna, you know, the good thing is there's a lot of good options now is finding low toxicity products that are like sustainably made, um recycle materials when we can, you know, benches, place structures, and then also try to utilize local contractors when possible, so that saves the aspect of that. Another important part of it, which is kind of unique to parks, is um engaging the community and our partners. Um they're a great resource, so we obviously have the park commission, um using volunteers, you know, to help with native gardens. We have the adopt a park measure and then just overall park monitoring to keep an eye on um certain aspects that we can stay on top of, like tree health and other gardens. Another important part is just public education, and we can do that with signage, you know, suppose cleaning up after your dog so that waste doesn't get into the water. And highlighting natural plantings and, you know, native, native areas, um that helps people kind of understand why they're there and what's going on. And then, of course, with Rachel's help through social media and the newsletter. I should run time, so I know you're next, so you go quickly.
I will. So in this case, the administrative team um has sustainability and resiliency action and kind of provided in the work that we do every day. And a lot of focus is on environmental today, but we also have other ways that we're contributing to sustainability and resiliency. One of the, one of the big ones is um waste reduction, so with cleanup days and brush site, um we have a one-hauler system uh for our single sort recycling. So this provides access to all residents, it reduces solid waste, landfill, um diversion from landfill. And then we also have the um or compostable organics drop-off site. So um I would say um that's one area that we could improve, um if we wanted to, um the organics um drop-off site. That's kind of a lot of um what we do is guided by um direction or policy from another agency or law or something like that. So we're doing kind of um not the minimum, but we're, we're meeting expectations. So with the organics, um to take it one step further could be to implement a curbside um collection service similar to our single sort recycling.
Do any of our neighbors do that at this point?
Okay, do you do it, Wes?
It's a, in the community decision, we've kind of been collecting information already on that and kind of moving forward before it becomes a requirement.
How was the organics drop-off been? Have, have we seen the numbers rise in usage?
We have, yes, yes, we're sharing information, um getting that combination lock on there, um so that people can get in. They're required to register, so.
I haven't been to that one, I have the drop-off here. I have to say, I use it and my garbage that I send out each week is like nothing. Actually, we go every other week because we don't even fill it up, but I, but I'm at the organic site, you know, twice a week dropping off and stuff. It's amazing how much you can, you know, compost versus throwing it away, so.
Yeah, one of the things if we do, one of the reasons we didn't go right to a um a curbside for our community is because of the mixed nature of our community. So uh we'll have to look at that because we have folks kind of in the middle of the city or on large lots who would say, why are you, why are you making me put compost in a bin and charging me for it? And you know, I run my own compost site right on my property that I use in my garden.
That's what we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, um so as we look at any of those types of programs, there's kind of, based on the nature of our community, we kind of have been looking at how that, how that would play out, so.
Yeah, and it may not be a choice in the future, so it might be a requirement at some point by Hennepin County. But something to consider and so far from the information I've received, about half the people that have submitted information are not interested in an extra cart, so. But anyways, something to think about, um what else? Our digital presence um is huge, it's a huge contribution to um uh sustainability, but also resiliency. Um our, our, our means are open, uh we're engaging online in a lot of different ways. We're working on um uh transitioning our paper and microfiche records um to digital, um so that.
How far along are we on that process?
We have a lot of records, but. For our sample council agendas during nineteen eighty-eight. So we have a lot of records, but currently the fiche aren't very accessible. And somehow there was something that happened to a building or something, you know, so it's very hard to.
Hard to resurrect those records.
Yeah, some people don't realize, you know, digitization of our records is a very, it's a big resilience thing. Because once they're digitized, they're stored on multiple servers, so. Right now, you know, if a tornado hits this building and hits the upstairs of City Hall there, and we lose everything from, you know, the nineteen teens to, to the nineteen eighties, which is gone. So getting these things digitized and restored is, is important.
Other areas, absentee voting, more of a social sustainability action. And again, with a lot of, of what we do and processes and the elections, it's all, also required by state, federal, county, agency. So we work closely together on that. But provides access to voters, so it keeps the election process the same way. Communication strategy, this is really important, and Rachel's been a huge help in this. Builds awareness, controls behavior change, strengthens our response, builds community engagement. Kind of meets people where they are, online, social media. And then allows us to educate in different ways. Keep enough about some of the recommendations, leaves and salt, you know, we can share some of those recommendations out there with the public. Policy and community, policy, I think those two are switched. Policies through ordinances, contracts, we probably record and archive those. And with our ordinances, processes, the licensing processes, it's all spelled out in ordinance or policy. It steps forward, kind of the baseline, we can do more on some things. I don't know how we monitor them, but that would be something that should be done through, through policy ordinance. And then staff development, we support a parent workforce. We have members, members of Minnesota Association of Public Computerists, Minnesota Clarkson Finance Officers Association, Recycling Managers Association, Internet Office Association, and City County Managers Association. We're training for today, but we'll show up in the future as well. Am I breaking up?
So that kind of concludes the going around the horn. I'm gonna rush through a couple of these, so we can have more time. We've had some good discussion as we go, but. So current projects, things that we have in the works right now. Koro mentioned, we're in our tree management plan, tree development, which has been a multi-year effort of, of trying to come up with a more comprehensive tree plan for the city. And then Laura mentioned the twenty fifty comprehensive plan, as we're about to kick off on that. You know, we'll have some work sessions dedicated to talking about that. And then, just as we discuss environmental and, or resiliency and sustainability, one of the things that I think we ought to look at is, what do we incorporate into this process that we're already gonna have to go through? And make sure we're being efficient with our resources too, and not being duplicative. There may be a lot of opportunities here to accomplish what we want to accomplish as we go through that process.
Did, did anybody, I got, as you know, I got an email from, like, Tree City USA or something like that, or Tree City Minnesota.
I, um, I did. So it's a program basically, in, for our level, it would be probably, it was not fiscally. It was very expensive for them to come here, probably like fifty thousand dollars.
Really?
I was also not, it took them probably about three weeks to get back to me.
Really?
And there were, after numerous attempts trying to, like, contact them through the website, there was nothing. But I finally did get ahold of someone, and then they were kind of broken down. It was, it was very expensive. Yeah, I think they kind of, or like a middleman to get the tree.
They assume that nobody in the city knows what they're doing. Okay, thanks for running that round.
Some opportunities, these are just some, some examples of things we might want to consider moving forward. So some existing programs and things, there's, there's this thing called the Green Step Cities, which is kind of a recognition type event. We've looked at bits and pieces of it in the past, and so you can go and then.
Do your analysis.
Do your analysis in certain functional areas, and then, you know, you get, you meet so many of them, you get, you know, your green, green, green step certified.
Right, it's like steps.
So we could look at doing that. The only thing I would say is, my brief experience of doing it in one element, it is extremely resource intensive as far as staff and time. So doing things like that, if we could do it, we'd either, we'd probably bring interns on, or get a consultant, or somebody to help us.
Or the possibility is volunteers, maybe?
Perhaps, just the, 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 some of these things, any of these, like certification type programs, is going and digging into our records and our, or stuff like that to be able to find the information to fill out their, you know, questionnaires and all that.
Policy analysis.
Eight years ago, I did the Energy One, and we actually had an intern that we had access to. And it was just figuring out building loads and LED light counts and all that. It just took a long time. And not that it's not worthy to do, but just when we start going down some of those paths, we, we have, if we're gonna do it, we have to dedicate the right resources to it, to do it properly.
I think it'd be worth looking, I've met their director a number of times at LMC events. They're very, very helpful, they've been helpful over the years. And I know a lot of other communities are on to them, and they're well on their way with those steps. So it's just something to consider, they've been, they're, they're a great resource.
They are, they're, yeah, they are.
I'd, I'd rather not, I mean, it's a discussion for another time, but if, if resources is part of it, maybe we could think creatively about it.
Excel offers an audit, an energy audit process. We've done some bits and pieces with Excel in, in the past, but there is a, there's a, a program they have we could, we could look at and doing some more comprehensive stuff. And then at the bottom here, on the, on the left, some studies, some climate action and sustainability studies that our neighbors are either in the process of, or have been doing. You can see listed there, YZ, and Tom Cuffman, Henning County offices, having for a while, we're a piggyback on. So folks do do this, I mean, all this, again, they, they come with a resource requirement, bringing a consultant or adding staff or whatever to put these things together. We may need to do some of that anyway as we go through the comprehensive plan. So there may be a, a need to do that. And, and you'll kind of see as we start pitching the CIP to you, that you'll see a lot of studies in the next two years projected, because, yes, we have to do a surface water management plan, we have to do a water plan, we have to do a sewer plan. We may need to do this and need it. I think the big thing is, if we do any of these things, it's just tying it into our existing processes that we're doing as well, to make sure that whatever we resource that work can be used to meet multiple needs of our city planning process. And then some things we could look at that we've heard in the, in the policy and ordinance is a more robust tree preservation ordinance. As most of you know, we have an ordinance, but it only applies to the seventy-five feet of the, of the lake. Landscaping, specific ordinances, we're very limited. Open space ordinances, we've done open space ordinance, or studies, we've done, we've got some things in our comprehensive plan, but we don't have.
Formal regulation, yeah.
And then steep slope ordinances, we have some block language, we have some, you know, restrictions in zero seventy-five, which often is also a steep slope. And blocks are obviously steep slopes by definition, but having additional protections or requirements there is something we could potentially look at.
Yeah, that's go beyond the block.
This slide's just in your packet again to talk about, all these things require us to work with other agencies and partners. It's empty. And then we, we can talk, however we want to talk, but I just threw these as some ideas of things, way to maybe bring the rest of the discussion. First of all, what, what, what's the vision of the council? Is there something discussed? Do we have a vision? Do we have, you know, do we have some derived, desired outcomes or goals at a real high-level policy level that we want to explore? Actually, I don't think we can come up with those today, but are those things we want to explore more and develop? How do we want to incorporate things, particularly sustainability or resilience with our comp plan? We'll have some more opportunities as we do the development and figure out how we're gonna get through that process in the future. And then, third, outside of the comprehensive plan process, we're gonna do, what are the things do we want to, to, to do? And once we figure those out, we'll have to privatize them and, and then figure out how we resource them, so.
Well, it seems like a good time to do it, when we're, when we have to do the comp plan update anyway. And it seems like we're doing a lot already, so maybe it is bringing awareness to the things that we're doing as one, certainly one goal. But there's, there's more that we can do, I'm sure. Any thoughts?
I think awareness is a big portion of it, and I think that's why I'm so thrilled that the Mayor's Monarch Pledge has been something that I think, and one of the park commissioners, I was at the meeting here last night, said, I think, two hundred plus seed packets were handed on a cleanup day, and that's a very, it's, I think, it's a hundred percent positive, which is not always the case in city government, that this initiative has taken off. And in terms of the visibility piece and the partnership piece, one of, one of my thoughts on this is that we understand as a city that we're doing lots of things. I say, not to say it's behind the scenes, but we have a lot of infrastructure plans in place that we're already working. That's not necessarily something that residents are at all aware of. So these visible initiatives that, that invite the public to be a part of this vision, I think, are very critical. And along those lines, in terms of partnerships, I've known for years, and have actually been a part of this, over right across our neighbors, of the school system here have a very robust program where every year they're, they're replacing four to five hundred square feet of turf grass behind the middle school with native plantings. This goes on every year. I spoke to their lead curriculum consultant this week, and, because they're aware that we now have this monarch pledge, and they're writing grants around pollinators and species, and with partnerships with the city, that, that's a very powerful plan. And it's something that I think should be considered going on in terms of, because I know school districts are here, Wernow and West Oak on our partnership list, because then we're hooking in, you know, the young folks too. They have a lot of volunteer efforts around these things. I think we have so many resources in terms of our residents here, that whether it's invasive control, park management, these are things that I, I would like to invite our community into this, not just the discussion, but to be part of the solution. Because I think one of the things that's really difficult for community members, and especially for young people, is that sense of sort of climate anxiety, for lack of a better word, is that it's so big, whatever these problems are with stormwater, climate, you know, changes, that what can one person do? And I think the answer to that is a lot. But I think it would be helpful to think about ways that we, as a city, inviting our public to be a part of the solution. And school children are a great, young people, families are a great part of that. And I know there's been initiatives in the city over the years with buckthorn removal parties at Casco and other areas. So one thought to put out there to give more visibility, to give more communication piece to a website. Those are great things to highlight.
Yep, school is one of our, our great partners, and we have had on and off in various functions. But just as an example, the reason Cory had to leave early is he and Shay are over speaking in, in a class. It's about, it's not about the environment, it's about leadership, but yes, we've done those. And I think we've, we've worked with the middle school, one of the teachers on some environmental stuff, particularly as we have bought them with, you know, with our facilities, you know.
I just want to pick up on, on one of the themes that you bring up, and that is community involvement. I think we have wonderful resources here in our people. People that have dedicated their careers to things that, now they're retired, and they would love to donate their time to the community, I think, so. I don't know what the secret sauce is to get, making that happen. I know that there's more work on the part of staff, at least at the front end, in terms of gathering some of those resources. But I think they're out there, and I think people would be willing to contribute their time and talent to, for some of these initiatives, so.
Well, and I think even, to both your point, creating awareness, right? So we brought up, we live at Wolfsburg Woods, right? We have friends of Wolfsburg Woods Association, right? But we also have those buckthorn pulling days. We have those different things like that, and, and maybe even find out who we have in our community now that is, is doing the, the butterfly, the.
Pollinator.
Yeah, the pollinators, right? And I bet you we could find out, there's several that, that are there that, whether they want to be made known or not, but I mean, we're doing some of those things that are helping to sustain and create that awareness, and, you know. So we have good things going on in our community already, let's recognize them. If they so want to be, right? Maybe sometimes they, they won't, but I mean, and that's fine. But, and then might help create that awareness to, where else can we do this? Where are other places? And to your point, with an active community, maybe people will take up the reins and kind of do that. Hey, what can we do for this over here? Let's, you know, I'm in this area, I live in French Creek, I want to help. What can we do over here?
I think especially when you see success too, because we are a smaller community with people walking trails all the time, biking, and when people see what's going on, that when you do see an initiative, like, and they do something, and you drive by and you're like, wow, that looks really good. You know, that was, you know, and you spread the word, started to let you again. But to, you know, make sure that, that people are aware of that, and I think that builds enthusiasm. Yeah, I also followed up with the Director of Natural Resources after the Three Rivers Commissioner gave us that great presentation. And there are a lot of resources, and they're hooking this into the next comp plan as well, as staff probably already knows. But there are more opportunities for our city to partner along these lines as, and I think that's the other thing, is working, not just across agency, but with other cities, because I know I've spoken with council members in neighboring community, communities who are doing these types of initiatives, and there's strength in numbers. And if we're working together with our latest partners, I think that's, council members don't always meet about these things. But they're happening in our partnering, in our other cities. But we don't have a mechanism sometimes as council members to work across council in these other cities with these types of initiatives. But this, these corridors, wildlife happen, you know, the police know and everything, they, they travel amidst communities, so.
And that's why one of the things we were trying to highlight in here is that, as, as you mentioned, there's not, other than like the, the mayor's associations and things like that, at the elective official level, there's not a lot of, but there's tremendous amount of integration at the staff level. There's not a, there's not a week, there's not a day that goes by that we're not talking to the Watership District, or at least weekday.
Yeah, on the weekends, we do.
So, yeah, we, we are collaborating. Three Rivers is a great has, has been, and is, is and has been a great partner for us. We've reached out to them numerous times, they're invasive species people. Cory mentioned, we've been working with their environmental folks on trying to, to, to address deer population stuff. They're the ones who gave us our first look at how, how to tackle buckthorn a few years ago. Their trail manage, management person, I think I talk to at least every other week on the engineering side as we talk about trails and things. So a lot of these agencies, we're, we are very engaged with, with them at the staff level. There's, but as you mentioned, there's not, probably not a ton of elected official level unless, again, the mayor has some. Has some as, as you go through the, the metro area or west metro, mayor's meetings and things like that.
So is that like an opportunity for us to have like a, a council level to try to meet with other cities? No, I think it's a great idea to meet with other cities, and then for us to be able to engage with the community rather than having to make staff do it, especially if they're at a higher level with other agencies, you know? That we can coordinate with staff, and instead, you know, we can coordinate with community and then with other cities and stuff. I don't just. Yeah, no, I think that's a good point. I think that there's that sense always that we want to stay within our lane and be effective within that lane. And, but I do stay abreast of what other communities are doing in their council meetings, how they're talking with the parks commission, open space commissions about resources. And I would say that I do think there's an area here, and it was, it's maybe being explored in our park commission, for more vol- for, um, more volunteerism within our community. Um, other parks commissions have a real, um, real well-developed volunteerism, and I think that eases that operational, um, pu- push on our staff to be able to lighten the load. And I think the term was boots on the ground last night in the parks commission. We have people, to, to the Mayor's point, who are hungry to be involved, who are interested in connecting, and this is also about building community through a positive impact. So, I, I, I think it, it's just something to consider without going into more detail. But I do think there's plenty of other inspiration right around here, but we can get quite focused, for good reason, on what we're doing within our own city. And it's helpful to kind of broaden that perspective as, as a council, as council members, because I know staff is doing that operational level at all times, but that doesn't always, it's not always known to, to council, and certainly not known within the community. It's connecting the dots, I think.
Yeah, no, I, I'm just thinking about how, how we would attract some of the people in our community that would be attracted to doing this. Um, you know, it's probably involves a tap on the shoulder by somebody in our position to say, hey, I know you know something about this. Would you be willing to spend some time on a volunteer committee? But I, but I don't know which shoulder to tap as far as that's needed, so. Maybe it's a concerted effort to kind of figure out what resources we have in the community, uh, and then it's incumbent on us to go ask them.
And we have a couple, couple, couple things we've, it, it, we've done in the past, uh, with varying levels of success. And it's largely through the park, Parks Commission, is they tried to develop some engagement, uh,
Right.
activities. Sometimes they've worked, sometimes they didn't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, you know, we, uh, we tried, they tried for several years to create a, uh, to get some energy behind a, uh, Friends of, uh, Friends of the Dog Park group, trying to, trying to build a community around that, because there, informally there is one, um, but, you know, trying to
Right.
create that as a community, it didn't, it never really took.
Didn't take off.
It did take off. I think largely because, uh, you know, you gotta tap the right person who then will bring the rest back.
Right.
Yeah, we did the Adopt a Park, which worked great for the first couple of years, but unless you put maintenance into it and re-engaging and, and constantly talking to those groups, um, you know, that kind of was when, I know the Parks Commission's looking at reinvigorating any version of that. Um, and then a lot of it largely depends on the various groups, you know, the, the, the Rotary and, uh, the Lions and some of those groups.
Against Saga Hill, I think the mayor knows about that.
Yeah. The Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, some of those groups, uh, and it depends on their leaders that kind of have been leading. But, you know, we don't, uh, some, some municipalities have like volunteer coordinators and things like that. Uh, we don't have that, so we have always been dependent on our commissions and our council members to, to do, do that with staff supported, but we've, you know, we really haven't taken like a lead in, in developing a really comprehensive program that we've, we've put a lot of, um, the staff effort or resources towards to then support, so.
Maybe we have to go to neighborhood settings, knocking some doors and pass out some little postcards and say, hey, we're starting this initiative, and if you guys are interested, you know, call one of the council members and we'll try to get in touch with, you know, and just, I mean, we're probably just gonna have to sort of the bottom and just try to fill it up.
Or pick certain things, right? Here, we're gonna start off with this initiative and get, you know, you find out who's interested, who wants to help out, and maybe he has that specialty, and you start that, and then, you know, I mean, get some involved and it creates some momentum. I mean, good and bad, I remember, you know, the whole, um, Big Island thing, right? You had that, there's people who were very active, went out there to help, uh, clean and do things, not saying everything was done right, but I mean, it, it's, there is those people, and I think that was, you know, getting asked by certain people. I mean, I was, I was on that committee for a while, because I was on the Planet Commission, you know, as the Planet Commission representative for a bit.
And that's the other challenge is, when you get these volunteer groups, then you also have to exercise a certain level of control.
Sure. That's exactly.
The next thing you know, you have volunteers showing up in your parks with chainsaws.
Right, right, right. Then you got the Watership District coming down and saying, wait a minute, wait a minute, you're doing that.
Or the sprayer or some kind of chemical.
Right, right, right. No, no, that's exactly, yeah, but I mean.
From the ones that I think have worked really well, like at Antmont, there's one particular resident who is extremely motivated, and she brings in the other residents to help. Same with, you know, Jeannie at the donation garden. You need kind of, from what I've seen, you need that kind of like, that, that, that really dedicated, um, person who is motivated, and then they can bring people in. Those seem to work, and then you have, you know, people may come and go, but you have that one person there who can bring them in. So, I think it's a great idea.
Do you have something?
Well, you guys can take just two minutes here. I just thank you for the discussion. Uh, I thought it was great today, and I'd really like to see Orno, you know, looking at these kind of things. I would suggest to take the first part of the program with what all these different departments are doing today, and take it, take that document to the council meeting, try to, you know, distill it down into maybe ten, fifteen minutes to present, and then the council votes that document in as official city document. Uh, because that, that way, and then you start advertising to the citizens, these, these are things we're doing, you know, and, 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 and these are things that we care about. And I think maybe a follow-up exercise would be in that document of what the city does today and all the different departments, there's a lot of values in that. These are, you see, recycling, uh, education. Take those values and they basically create silos for all those values. Like, we, we care about, you know, Lake Minnetaka, we care about, you know, being, you know, recycling, reusing, we care about, um, you know, one of my things is natural engineering. You know, we try to naturally engineer it before we put the concrete down and pipes down. You know, um, you know, for a long time, Orno was like no curb but gutter, you know, and that worked in ninety percent of the time. We had issues in, in certain situations, but is that still a value? Is that still a value the council and staff hold? Is that we're gonna try to naturally engineer before we put concrete down? The, for example, these are, you know, these are things you can work on over time, but I, I do think that that first part of this powerpoint should be an official city document going forward, and I think you need to do that, you need to approve that at a council meeting. But I always say the staff did great, a lot of, uh, departments did great work on putting down all these, um, all these issues, and I think I'd love to see the council basically make it official. So, that, that's my sort of, you know, business suggestion about how, and then, you know, then advertise this to the citizens. This is stuff we're interested, and then maybe we can get volunteers or groups coming back to you and say, hey, I can help here, and I can help there. Or, you know, so, that's just a suggestion of how to, you know, do your business part of this, and, 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 and. And then, you know, Rachel can put out different programs, she can talk about different programs the city's doing in the newsletter, you know, take a couple, see, you know, seasonal ones, broadcast that. It just kind of helps get citizen involvement going and, so. Move the ball forward, right, right, right.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, that.
No, this was great.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I guess, uh, just real quick for you, um, in any particular next ones you'd like to see? Like, again, we're going to have, we've already got on the calendar some work sessions to talk about the comp plan and how we're gonna move through that process, so that's out there. But if there's, if there's some desires, uh, and obviously you can direct it anytime in subsequent meetings, but is there anything takeaways that, uh, we'd like to look at focusing on other than what we already have in the, in the works right now?
Well, I kind of, yeah, I kind of like the idea of having this, you know, what, what we're doing now kind of highlighted at a meeting, that, uh, that we can then, you know, highlight to the public and, and, uh, we can then use the newsletter and other communication tools to get it out. I think that's a good idea. I don't know if it's something we officially approve, because it's already been done, uh, but it's something that we should highlight at a, at a meeting.
Sure.
We could take some of this and chime, and kind of break it up in, as a, like a public awareness, kind of campaign to different topics on what we're doing to share the topic bit by bit.
Yeah, what is the difference between, I mean, it's usually like voting at the end, is there some distinction that's made about sort of saying, these are values that we hold and we're going to take an official action on this versus simply saying we wanna give more awareness?
Um, well, I mean, I, there's some nuances, I guess, but we could bring something like that and you could just endorse it. Um, normally, like, uh, so formal plans, policies, documents, you know, we do bring to the council and then we ask you to adopt.
Right.
And then, then that's like the storm, the surface water management plan I mentioned, you know, that, that was developed, reviewed, brought to the council, and then the council, um, has to adopt it, and then it, you know, it becomes official.
This is kind of like a, like a current, current practice report. This is almost like an update on our current practices. I don't know if you need like a formal resolution. There's not like future policies or future regulations necessarily that you're asking to change or goals you're moving forward. It's more about, these are our process. It's almost an update.
Just endorsing what we're doing and highlighting what we, that we take this seriously.
And you can also make a motion about where you want this to go. You want it on the website, you want some, you know, you can add, you know, your motion to be, take this document and do X, Y, Z with it too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's actually a very good idea, to just kind of say, hey, staff, take, take this, put it on the website, highlight what we're doing, you know.
Yeah, it is, because again, many of these things are not necessarily new, although I think the impulse here, at least what I'm hearing in the council, is that we want to not just do what we're doing, but we wanna look forward, um, not just to the comp plan, but also to locally what we're able to build upon here. And I think highlighting that, and it, it's, it's a change. It is a change from the last number of years, and I think that necessitates more communication, it's something to be really proud of, I think, I'm excited about.
I don't know how we could incorporate to giving the word up that we are hoping to develop a volunteer army of some sort. I, 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 I know we need to be careful about it, but I just consider it first. But it, yeah, I, I really would like to get that word up, that, that would be something that we'd like to do without getting guys showing up with chainsaws in the yard.
Yeah, and, and, and that is something that we would definitely want a council directing along. Uh, like I said, there, there are some things, you know, percolating up through our normal processes within the Parks Commission, but, um, you know, it's, at, at, at some point, yeah, we wanna bring, uh, the outline of, of, of plans and, and, or some goals and things in that regard, volunteerism or whatever we call it, to the councils for then you to endorse and say, yes, build on this with X, Y, and Z, and, and then you do that to either develop a, a policy or a, 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 a plan that then's adopted, uh, and resource to do those things. But I think that's a, that's maybe the next step beyond what we were just talking about, which is acknowledging current practices.
And I think a lot of that would be incorporated probably when we start talking about the kickoff to the comp plan too, because we will be asking for engagement, subcommittees, focus groups, and all that type of thing. So, maybe not necessarily physical action like in the parks, but more kind of informal and feeding into our policies or our goals and our programs of the city about, for the next, for the future growth of the city. So, we, through the comp plan, will be asking for, um, maybe not volunteerism, but a lot of engagement, yeah.
So, that could be a nice springboard to do, to do with the type of community engagement we're envisioning here.
Right.
Put them into that process and then take, take.
Can you give me an example of, of the salt brine program, reducing salt, like, you know, you, you guys are all in touch of it, but the rest of the citizens aren't, have no idea. So, you can talk about the brine program, why you drive down and see these white stripes on the road when you're a stormer, you know, put that in the newsletter, and then tag along at the end about private salt management, you know? You know, make sure you don't spill salt in your driveway. You can tie that in together with the city's best practices. You can also talk about the wellhead management program and why, why that's needed. People are like, oh, it's just another government bureaucratic regulation. Well, this is, you know, this protects your, you know, your groundwater, your drinking water, and other cities have had issues because where their wells were above it, there's been, you know, infiltration. These are examples, um, talking about, you know, the sewer and, and, um, you know, inflows. I mean, we, we might think that's really boring stuff, but citizens will eat that up, and the newsletter in past surveys has been found to be the most read access to information for the citizens. They, they sit down and they actually read it. So, it's a powerful tool of getting these messages out, getting this education out, and a lot of citizens do wanna read about how this stuff is. You know, when you're on the council, you learn it, you figure everybody else knows about it, and ninety percent of citizens have no idea. They don't even think about sewer systems, you know? They just want it to work. And your job is to give them a little more information about the complexities, you know, and, and that go into, you know, the Orno and Met Council system. So, um, you know, and I think that, that's, you know, and that could be on the website and the newsletter, but that's the, the education. I think government really suffers because people won't have a chance to learn about all these nuances, which I didn't till I got on the council. And now everybody's learning these new, these things on social media, and there are like two sentences of angry whatever. The, the education piece, learning about how government works, you know, sign setbacks, whatever. You know, when you buy a house, you have no idea of all the regulations that go into your house. So, the more, you know, we can educate without, you know, being two-time concerned, you know, the better to counter, you know, the, the quick soundbites that send people off in a, you know, into anger.
Right. Especially the newsletter. I mean, I read that thing from front to back.
I just look at the pictures, so. Thank you, thank you for doing that.
No, we, a lot of people love, they come, they just love Orno, but they don't know why. They don't, you know, they're like, I just love it out here, it's really peaceful. But they don't realize the regulations that went into making that happen, you know? And that's something, and that, that's, there's a lot of great historical stuff about Orno and how Orno in the seventies, you know, really changed and decided to protect wetlands. You know, we were gonna be a one acre city back in the seventies, and they said, Lake Minnetaka can't handle that. We need to have, you know, um, bigger lots, and we need to protect wetlands because that holds and filters water going into Lake Minnetaka. And we have, you know, our seventy-five set, set foot setback is longer than, you know, other cities around the lake, which are fifty foot. We, we have more, our citizens said, please, let, back then, they said, let's protect the environment. And then people come out here now from Minneapolis, and they're like, I really like it out here, it's peaceful. But they have no idea the history that went into making it stay peaceful, if you will. And requirements in current, they keep what is. And, yeah, and they say that regulations can be positive, um, if, because they protect nature, and everybody loves the nature out here. They're so down on that.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
All right. Anything, anything else?
Uh, well, we'll, uh, bring something to the council that was suggested, then. I think, uh, this will be a great feeder into, Laura's gonna be hitting you up within a few weeks, or a few, another month or so when we talk about comp plan.
Yeah, good.
Awesome.
Have we ever thought of a comp plan, you know, these days, applying, um, to like private roads that we would have them pay for as we went in? I don't know how much that would cost or if you.
No, we haven't done it that way. We, we were a, a consumer, um, and of, uh, other cities before we built our own ability.
An appointment doesn't last for other cities and stuff, or they kind of pick up the brine from them.
Yeah, so we used to, we used to draw our brine from Minnetaka, um, because they were adopter, um, before we developed our own system.
Right. I don't know if that's something that's feasible. I know we have.
The only challenge, yeah, would be just, uh, inter- and, and integrating with, uh, with all these private contractors and, you know, how that, without deep blocking of liability, all that kind of stuff.
And it might be association, association, right? Your homeowner's association, right?
You are the, we're the association.
Just say, hey, we want this, we wanna have, when we bid out our contracting for that snowblowing, but you wanna see this. So, you know, you start at that very local level, right? The holders, those.
Right, but it just seems like when we'll be talking about, like Steve said, how much salt you're putting down and stuff, and it, it, it makes sense, you know, before the snowplow guys that we, you know, hired for the winter are gonna come and snowplow, and then you hope that they're gonna put the salt down, and enough and not too much and stuff like that, so, anyway, I just was throwing it out there as an idea.
Yeah, no, the, um, yeah, it could, it, it could possibly work. The biggest challenge is they're all using private.
Yeah.
Right. Various private contractors of various skills and abilities.
Some dude who has a plow and, and throws the, throws the salt out, right?
You know, at least create some awareness on our website or whatever, and get social media saying that, you know, for the Red Roads out there, the suggestion would be in your bylaws or whatever it is to, or as you go out to bid, look for these kinds. the suggestion would be in your bylaws or whatever it is to, or as you go out to bid, look for these kind of sustainability issues and, you know, things for the environmental. And I mean, we're helping there, because at the end of the day, it's, it's really a local decision. I mean, to the basic local, it's your homeowner association, right?
Yeah, I get that. It's just that that's such a great system, you know, that, rather than throw the big salt down to have the brine.
No, yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you for preparing an excellent session, Chris.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good.
Look forward to doing more on this area, so.
Very exciting.
It is.
Good job, Bob.
Tucked it out.
Do you have to go to summit, or did they like your picture?